Are we ready?
You're ready.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of South Fulton. Staff have anything? All right, at this time, uh, staff, will you do a roll call for us, please?
Mr. Johnson? Dr. Blackshear?
Present.
Ms. Patterson?
Present.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. All right, uh, has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes from our last meeting?
Yes, I have.
Are there any issues, uh, with the minutes from the last month's meeting or the month prior?
No, moving forward.
Anyone else have any issues, uh, having reviewed the minutes of the last meeting? If not, I'll be more than happy to entertain a motion as it concerns the, uh, minutes.
I, I, I make a motion to approve the minutes from two months ago.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Hearing no objection, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
I'm gonna abstain from this vote since I was not here.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell abstains, but the minutes from last month's meeting are approved and entered into the records. All right, our next item on the agenda is V two five dash zero zero seven zero Thompson Road. That's parcel ID zero nine F three zero 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 one one seven zero six eight six, Council District Six. Uh, the staff wanna give us an update on that or give us some insight?
Yes, V twenty-five dash zero zero seven, the address is zero slash fifty-three ninety-five Thompson Road. The applicant is requesting, um, variances from section seven zero seven dot zero two, table two. Maximum number of signs to exceed the number of the level wall signs by additional, by three additional wall signs. This is in City Council District Three, staff is recommending approval for sign C, but denial for signs F and D.
Other parties here for, uh, V two five dash zero zero seven?
Yes.
Okay. You guys wanna come to the podium? Uh. Staff have anything on this?
Your report.
Staff is recommending approval for sign C and denial for signs D and F.
Okay, all right, uh, at this point, we'll take a motion to open up public discussion on V two five dash zero zero seven.
I'd like to make a motion to open discussion.
On a clarification?
Yes.
Did the applicant wanna come speak to her, her application?
That's why I was opening the floor for public discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to open discuss, open the public, uh, public hearing for, uh, case V twenty-five dash zero zero seven five three nine five Thompson Road.
Okay, all right.
Hang on one second.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to open the floor for public discussion on V two five dash zero zero seven, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, hearing none, public discussion is open now on V two five dash zero zero seven. Uh, you are the applicant, please state your name, address, and if you are a resident of City of South Fulton, please.
All right, yes, uh, good evening, everyone, my name is Brooke Smith, I'm the local owner and operator of Chick-fil-A South Fulton Parkway. We're located at five three nine five Thompson Road in the city of South Fulton, and I am a resident of the city of South Fulton.
All right, so you're gonna have ten minutes to make your presentation, and then we'll go from there. You can suspend your time if you want time to rebut, if there's anybody here, uh, in opposition to your request. Other than that, you have ten minutes and you have the floor.
Okay, yes, sir, thank you. Um, so as the local owner and operator of Chick-fil-A South Fulton Parkway, I myself, Brooke Smith, will speak, and then we also have a representative from corporate Chick-fil-A that will help us speak as well. Um, but I just wanted to say, adding these signage, uh, we have three, we have, uh, C, F, and D, as you see on the screen. Based on the elevation of our restaurant, this will allow, allow wayfinding for our guests and for the community of the city of South Fulton. Um, we are asking that we add these because we do think that it will allow us to improve our guest experience as well as the community experience. Based on the elevation of the restaurant from Highway ninety-two and Thompson Road. Um, by improving the guest experience, this would allow us to improve the overall business, which forty percent of our business right now, um, forty percent of our team members right now are the youth in the city of South Fulton, and that's why it's so important for us to continue to grow the business each and every year. We wanna continue to be able to add those jobs to our high schoolers in the city of South Fulton. Um, all of our forty percent of those team members attend schools in the city of South Fulton, Westlake, Creekside, Langston Hughes, Global Impact Academy. And so we do believe by adding this signage, it improves our guest experience, which grows the business, which allows us to continue to add more jobs for the youth and for the overall community in the city of South Fulton. And so that's why we're hoping that we've been a benefit to the community, we've been here for a year, we celebrate one year open next Friday. And so we are hoping that you all allow us to add all of the signage and see that it can improve our business, which improves the city of South Fulton. Thank you. I'm gonna allow, uh, Chick-fil-A corporate to speak, if that's okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Just, uh, introduce yourself, please, Forrest.
Yes, Pete Hatcher. Address is six four eight seven Hilliard Drive, Canal Winchester, Ohio, four three one one zero. Um, I just wanna state that we do agree with, uh, staff to approve, uh, sign C. Uh, but regarding sign D, um, there's vegetation also on that elevation as well, which was somewhat, some part of the reason for the recommendation for sign C. Uh, sign D is also gonna have that as well. Um, so they're gonna need to have, have that visibility, plus it's, there's a customer entrance there, so people can see the customer entrance. Uh, it's important for patrons to be able to get where they're going with, you know, least amount of confusion possible. Um, I also wanted to state that the nearby McDonald's also has five wall signs as well, uh, on their building already. And that sign F, it's, it's, it's not visible, it's just for the patrons, you know, on the lot, uh, it's for the community. And that's all I have, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, let's just give us one second. Uh, do we have anybody signed up, staff, in opposition?
There's no one in opposition.
No one in opposition, okay. Is that the extent to how you all wanna present your case?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, at this time, we'll close the for, floor, uh, for public discussion, and I'll take a motion from, uh, the board.
I'll make a motion to close the public discussion on case V two five dash zero zero seven Thompson Road.
Point of, point of clarification, are we still allowed to ask questions if we close it?
Yes.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing none, we are out of public discussion. Uh, at this time, since I normally start on that end, I'll start on this end, Ms. Faraday, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Not at this time.
Okay, what about you, Mr. O'Donnell?
Question for staff, uh, regarding the ordinances, uh, for signage. What is the, uh, effect of temporary signs? Is there any ordinance of, uh, clarification, help me out with, uh, uh, any temporary signs, uh, with that? Is there any ordinance for a temporary sign?
Yes.
And what, and help me out with what those might be.
I need one second to look it up.
Okay.
There's a, there, we do have an ordinance for temporary signs. Uh, do you have a specific question about it, or just you wanna know about?
Is there a quantity, um, or is there, um, um, any type of setback requirements, anything like that, uh, that there might be?
Give me one second.
And while we're doing that, question for the applicant.
Hang on one second, would, would you go, mind coming back up, please? You can both come up in case, uh, assistance is needed.
Either one of these find the answer, you know, as we go through this. Um. Uh, with regard to the one particular sign, we talk about vegetation being a hardship. Uh, who is responsible for the landscape design and plan for the location? Was that done by, uh, the Chick-fil-A, or was that done by the city of South Fulton?
I do not have the answer to that question.
And I would venture to say that we had input on the design, but I'm pretty sure the city of South Fulton had to confirm and approve any type of design that we did submit.
Okay.
And any type of vegetation or even the elevation that's kind of restricting us right now from the street and the road. We were just kind of not forced, but we had to go along with whatever we could do based on the approval.
So were you required to plant those trees that are gonna eventually block that side of the view, if you will? Was that a requirement?
Give me one second, I just wanna confirm that I'm speaking to the right view of the building.
These, these young trees.
Hmm, yes.
All right against the building.
So I do believe those trees were, uh, planted on our end from Chick-fil-A for landscaping purposes. I can say that when we took over, um, the land, that there was vegetation already there and trees already planted. I'm not sure if that was just to add to what was already there, to replace it, so that we're not taking away environmental, you know, landscaping that was there, and we're not putting it back or things like that. But I do think that was added on our end.
Okay. Uh, in terms of the number of signs, uh, looking at, uh, how many other locations require three signs?
Yes, thank you for that question. Um, so currently Chick-fil-A's, uh, land, Chick-fil-A's restaurant design includes all of the signage that is here. We're actually one of the only restaurants that were, that was opened in twenty twenty-five, that, in twenty twenty-four, that is limited to the signage that we have. And so if you all were to go to Peachtree City, if you were to go to Douglasville, if you were to go to Noonan, every Chick-fil-A that is new has that signage. And that's why we're trying to bring it to the city of South Fulton. We wanna be just as great as the other cities and the Chick-fil-A's that they have and not be limited by our design.
It's funny you mentioned Peachtree City, I drove by that store, and there's only two signs, so we could pull that up, uh, on, on Google Maps, if you'd like. There's one facing forward and one facing to the west of that store.
Yes, sir, and do you know when it was built?
Not sure, but is that store successful or is it unsuccessful?
Yes, sir, I would say that it's successful, and I think the biggest thing is that each year Chick-fil-A learns from each design. I do, do you mind telling me which part of Peachtree City that's in? Is it Key Drawn Village or?
Yeah, it's the one east of, uh, the main intersection there of seventy-four and what is it, thirty-four or fifty-four?
Okay, yes, sir, so I say that our design, if y'all have gone by five three nine five Thompson Road, is more like a dwarf house. Um, we're a larger restaurant to be able to handle the city of South Fulton and all the growth that we're gonna have. Y'all know that Grady is coming right across the way from us, and the signage for this size building is increased because that building in Peachtree City is a smaller square footage, and so they don't need as much signage.
Do you have the answers to those questions, would you answer?
Yeah, we do have a section on temporary signs, section seven zero six dot zero six, but your question was concerning setbacks.
Well, just is, is there a number, uh, uh?
Is there a limit on?
Is there a limit on signs?
So we have banner signs, small temporary signs, and flag signs, and signs during construction. Those all have different criteria, uh, but generally, yes, there is a limit, um, no more than fourteen days for any of those signs.
No more than fourteen days they can be up?
Correct.
Oh. But what about the quantity? For a business that's in place, for example, when I drive by this particular location, I counted ten signs that were already up in the drive-through area. So that's why I'm wondering what, you know, if we've got all those signs, is it necessary that we put three more signs?
So for banners, um, there's no more, there's one banner sign temporary for a, uh, a feather flag sign, again, that's just one, no greater than thirty-two square feet. And then for small temporary signs, there's no more than two per lot.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Patterson?
Thank you, um, I don't, I think the question is for the staff. Is there a line, that part of South Fulton Parkway and ninety-two, that's where the location? Where does the Union City piece end and the South Fulton piece begin? Cause I, it, it may be that, like McDonald's.
South Fulton Parkway.
Mm-hmm. Is it, is that everything up to the corner is South Fulton?
The highway divides us.
Okay, cause I, I know when you go further down, that changes. Um, I just wanna confirm with the staff. Okay. And the reason why I'm asking that, um, sometimes we've had, um, petitions come before the board, and, um, you know, there are buildings that were put in place before the city was established, and there were buildings that were put in place before certain ordinances were put in place. So we wanna keep in mind that the time that a building came into being will impact, even if they're right next door to each other. One may appear to have a different coverage than the other, but we wanna keep in mind, you know, what's in place at that time. So I just wanted to confirm that. The reason why I'm even asking that is cause at different intersections where, um, South, where Union City and South, City of South Fulton meet, there's different lines, um, that cross over, like over by Stonewall Tel, Union City extends past, uh, South Fulton Parkway, so I just wanted to verify that.
Yep, so we're along Camerton Fairburn Road up until Highway ninety-two, twenty-nine, sorry, South, South Fulton Parkway. And then across, directly across the street is Union City, I believe. And then to the right of the property, there's a little bit of South Fulton, but then that's Union City as well.
So to the right of the property is Union City?
Yes, facing Camo, um, Camerton Fairburn, to the right of the property is Union City.
Okay. So, uh, I, I, I have to agree with, um, Commissioner, um, Brian, that, you know, um, we definitely appreciate and, and the staff. I, I can definitely appreciate the, um, desire to wanna clearly, you know, make wayfinding for client, for customers. I think that, um, that is wonderful, but one thing I can say in comp, in, in compliment to Chick-fil-A, I think you guys, I think people who are waiting in line to get to their Chick-fil-A, first of all, we all figure our way out how to get in there. And most importantly, you all always figure out how to get us out of there very quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, I, I, you know, I'm inclined to kind of agree with what the questioning was, was, you know, we, we don't want to deteriorate from too far from the ordinance, um, because we would like to standardize a certain look and feel in the city. Um, so I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
I'm finished, I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Blackshear?
Yes, um, you spoke about the experience.
Yes, ma'am.
And particularly the teens in the community, the current experience that they have, has there been some type of study that you all have done? Or had some type of research done that showed what the current experience is towards what the new experience would be in relation to bringing in this signage?
Yes, ma'am, so the only thing that I can speak to are the new restaurants that were built in twenty twenty-four. And so I know Chick-fil-A was very thoughtful in the signage that was added, particularly if you look at signage labeled F. It says welcome friends and neighbors of the city of South Fulton. And the one thing that I can say is this is welcome signage that was added to be more of a benefit to the guests, not even the brand at all. There's nothing that would be added to us by having that signage, but it's very welcoming to the community. And as one of the only two Chick-fil-A's that we have in the city of South Fulton, Cascade Road was built over ten years ago, and unfortunately didn't have the ability to look as new restaurants in other cities in the city of Atlanta. And so that's why I am here to advocate for us in the sense that we don't know the next time that the city of South Fulton is gonna get a Chick-fil-A. So wouldn't we want this Chick-fil-A to have the wayfinding signage that is the newest and the most innovative to bring that to the city of South Fulton, to the guest experience, to the team member experience? And again, by adding this signage, it improves the guest experience, which allows us to continue to grow the business for the city of South Fulton.
Okay, so if you add that signage, would you need all of the other signage if there are more than? How many signs did you say you saw, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Approximately ten.
Would you need all ten, would, would that?
Yes, ma'am, so the.
Pull back on some of the other signs?
So the ten signs that Mr. O'Donnell, I think that you're, uh, that you're speaking to right now are our temporary seasonal signage. Um, we do signage in different ways, just to, you know, bring some goodness to the community. Uh, previous, previously during graduation season, we had a picture of every graduate in the city of South Fulton that works for us in the drive-through as well. And that was temporary signage. I would like to say, I think all of you have gone to our restaurant, I hope that you think it's beautiful. Um, every day I'm out there picking up trash, y'all will probably see me walking the streets picking up trash myself, I don't have my team do it, I, I do it myself. And that is because we wanna bring greatness to the city of South Fulton. Nothing that we put on this business would not be tasteful.
So those are all temporary things?
Those are all temporary signs, they can be pulled up at any moment.
Got you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? Yes, uh, first of all, I, I'd like to commend you for putting those signs up with the kids' pictures on there. I, I go to Chick-fil-A, I seen you out there a lot.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Doing stuff, so I commend you for that, and, um, I totally, uh, I agree a hundred percent with what you guys are asking for with these signs because. because I want to make sure I'm correctly hearing you say McDonald has, how many signs next door?
Five.
Yeah, so you're not asking for anything more than what your neighbor got?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I 100% wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else from any board members? Mr. O'Donnell?
I have one last thing. I was just going to say, congratulations on your upcoming year.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
One last question with regard to the landscaping.
Yes, sir.
Is it currently impacting or is this an anticipated problem in the future?
Currently.
So those trees are currently blocking the view of that restaurant?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions from board? All right, so at this time, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to propose a motion.
Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve signs C, D, and F.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'll ask staff to take a hand count, just so we can be clear.
Can all in favor raise their hands? Can all opposed raise their hands?
All right, motion fails for lack of support. Is there another motion regarding this or where are we at? Ms. Patterson?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to, I move that in accordance with the with the staff recommendation with one modification, I move that the approval would be for sign C and I think it's F, hold on. The one that says welcome?
Yes, ma'am.
C and F. Is that correct, Mr. O'Donnell?
I don't think staff recommended the welcome one.
They did, okay.
I don't believe they did.
Oh, I thought that one was recommended. Okay, then I would like to recommend a change from the original. I would move that we approve sign C and sign F, as in Frank.
There's a motion on the floor.
I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve sign C and F. So I'm assuming your motion also implicitly denies sign D?
Correct.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? Hearing no nays? Congratulations, you have not everything you wanted, but you have signs C and F.
Yes.
And good luck to you.
I appreciate it. Thank y'all. Have a great day.
Yes, ma'am. All right. For the sake of efficiency, we're going to move into our second case, V25-008, 5255 Old National Highway. I'm going to just go ahead and read this since y'all put it in here. Trinity Huckabee care of Telay Industries, Inc., requesting variances to section 707-02, table 72, to exceed the number of allowable digital menu boards by installing a digital menu board sign and digital pre-sale board sign and to exceed height requirement for drive-through signs. Staff, what do you have on this?
Staff is recommending a denial.
Okay, that was quick, that's a safe. Is the applicant here?
I'm ready.
Okay, sir, please step forward. All right.
Point of order. I move that we open public discussion
Good deal.
for case V25-008.
Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded to open public discussion on V25-008, 5255 Old National Highway. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we are in public discussion.
I'm sorry, Chairman Mathis, we're just on the application information. We just have one correction. It says City Council District 1, but it's City Council District 5. It's number 5 to be exact. On the agenda is correct, but on the application?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, so you'll part that out, staff, and get that corrected. Okay, sir, please give us your name, address, and if you are a city of South Fulton resident, you'll have 10 minutes to make your case. You can reserve some time if you need. If there's anybody in opposition who wants to come up and speak to rebut. If not, you have the floor.
My name is Cola Waz. I'm the IT manager for the Wendy's franchise. I live in Ferry Drive in Marietta, Georgia, so I'm not a resident of the city. I'm sorry, I'm coming into this kind of after the fact. I was at, we purchased it, we remodeled this as a remodel location. It has existed since long before the city of South Fulton. We were not aware that we had any issues with the two signs as requested because new construction for the other Wendy's five miles down the road has the same two signs. So we did not apply for variance at the time for that, and then the height requirement we just missed. We caught the square footage because we were told about that at the other Wendy's. So it was like, you know, this is a standard Wendy's design having the two signs. It's been there, you know, the original signs were not repairable. So we had to replace them during the remodel. So if we made a mistake on the height of the sign, I've got a message to the manufacturer to see if we can, if there's a way to lower the sign so they would be lower than the six foot. But we have to get custom brackets or modify the brackets that they're made with.
You're here to get a variance for your sign. You want to make the case to keep these signs?
Well, I'm sorry, like, the height thing we missed. I apologize for that, and we'll see if we can fix it. If we can get a continuance or whatever the phrase is to address that contact and manufacturer and see if we can fix that. The number of signs in the drive-through area, we were not aware it was an issue because the other, like I said, the new construction from 2022 has the same two signs. And approved, and then the plans were approved by the city showing two signs in place.
You said the plans were approved?
Yes, sir. I can't find a stamped copy, but they were approved. That's why we wouldn't have been able to start construction.
The signs as they currently stand?
The original signs, which are both larger than the two that we have.
I got you. Okay, okay.
Were on the plans for the remodel that were approved by the city. So when we put two new signs in, we weren't aware there was an issue.
All right, that?
That's all, basically all I'm just saying.
Okay, well, you got seven minutes in reserve. Is there anyone here in opposition for V25-008? No one in opposition?
There's no opposition.
Okay. At this time, we'll take a motion from the board to close public discussion on this issue, and I make a motion to close public discussion. It's been properly moved?
I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we are closing public discussion. Staff, do you have anything before board? So we'll start with this time, Mr. Johnson, you have any questions of the applicant? Sir, please stay up. Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah. First question, kind of for staff. What he's saying is it was kind of approved, two signs when they started the construction piece. Is that normal?
No, signs are done separately from the building permit.
Signs are done separately from the building permit. Okay. Original two signs, you replacing those, correct?
Yes, sir, that Wendy's was built before the city of South Fulton. Now, I understand the ordinance changes and stuff. So we replaced two existing signs with two new signs that are, but both of them are shorter, smaller, so they're closer to six feet than the existing signs would have been.
Right. So you have basically upgraded?
Yes, sir, it was an upgrade.
Yeah. All right, and the height that you're asking for on this drive-through?
It's less than an inch.
Yeah, it's normal, right.
If this is a standard Wendy's design, it's apparently that.
Yeah. You're trying to move it seven inches, what like, from six feet to six seven?
No, six feet point oh seven, to less than an inch difference. It's less than an inch over your ordinance.
Yeah, I don't even know why we even having this discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had to ask three different times to get exactly what y'all were looking at, to see six foot or that seven tenths of an inch.
Yeah, I do understand, you know, we do have to follow what we got here on paper. You know, I don't want to disrespect our staff members. They follow it to the letter. But resident, say something, look. Everybody, no problem, sir. You done well.
Dr. Blackshear?
Yes. How old are these signs?
The signs that are there now are?
Yeah, because I have pictures of them, and they look really new.
Yes, ma'am, the signs that are there now, we were installed in June of last year.
June of last year.
The signs that were there, that were replaced are from when the building was new in about 2007, I believe.
And no one, no one from your organization or company thought to call to find out what the responsibility would be in order to have those new signs put there?
They were contracted, these are standard Wendy's signs, and I'm not sure if the sign installer?
And I ask because you're asking for something that's already been completed.
We didn't find out there was an issue until after everything was completed in place, and everything except for this was apparently signed off on by the city. We have a copy of the regular signs for the new monument sign out the front and the building sign that were replaced. So the other company, Signal Signs, has gotten signed off on everything. We didn't, we're not aware until after we'd opened
Okay.
that there was an issue with the digital signs in the back. They're not visible from the street.
Right. Okay, and, okay, because I asked because it could be a possible code violation because the signs were already replaced without proper approval. That's that's where I'm going to leave my statement right now. Thank you.
Ms. Patterson? Mr. O'Donnell?
The single-digit digital pre-sale board?
Yes, sir.
What is your hardship that requires that sign?
It's the signage to help the customer make their mind up while they're waiting in line for, to get to the main menu board and to the speaker post so they can speak to the staff inside?
So there's nothing regards to the actual land, the property, or anything like that that requires that sign? You've got that sign there to expedite your customer and improve the flow of your restaurant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Faraday, you have anything? Is there anything you want to add, sir, to help the board make a decision?
If there's a question about the height, I can, like I said, I'm trying to reach the manufacturer, see if there's a way to mount them differently or modify the bracket so that we can lower them. If, you know, if that would help make a decision, we can.
Mr. O'Donnell? One final question.
Yes, sir.
The three-board sign that you have?
Yes, sir.
Can that be modified so that it's only two panels?
I'd have to find out. That's not a standard Wendy's design, so we'd have to figure out if they were allowed us to do that. If Wendy's corporate would allow us to do that, we're a franchise, so some things we have to do what they recommend, what they tell us to and within city codes.
And are you aware, is there any options out there to potentially have a two-panel menu board?
Not approved by Wendy's.
I have another, I have one last question.
Dr. Blackshear?
It's for the staff. With the staff recommendation being denial, what's the ramification for that? The ultimate?
Seeing that the signs are already up? They would have to take them down, or like you mentioned, it'd be a code violation.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I was on the right track. Okay.
All right, so I think, or assuming everybody's got their questions out, is there a motion at this time?
Yeah.
Let's hear it.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion on case V25-008, 5255 Old National Highway with the recommendation of the denial to avoid the destruction of that. I would like to make a motion to, at the most, a code fine be administered to the corporate, to your company for having those signs put up before they were approved.
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
I would prefer to have a code or a fine from code to be administered to you all versus you all having to take the signs down completely.
Okay, so.
As a recommendation, that's my motion. I'll defer on my motion.
I'd like, could I make an amended motion? Well, I don't think we had a complete motion.
I deferred.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
So there's no amendment?
Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we let me go back here. I'd like to make a motion that we
Point of clarification?
Yes.
Before the motion is made, if that's okay?
Ms. Patterson has the floor.
And this question is for staff. If the, if the, because the menu boards are already in place, if the board agreed to allow, to allow them to stay in place, is there a further action from the city of South Fulton?
No. Who just approved the permit?
So after the fact, if they are approved for that, then they will not be in violation?
If the board grants this approval, we'll approve their permit, and then they will have the right approvals for the current signs.
Okay, so there would be no levy, fine levy?
Well, and my reason for asking that is because if that is granted, what would stop anybody else from doing that same thing, coming with the same reasoning? If it will come right back to us with, okay, since it's already up, we're just going to go ahead and prove it. So then we could have that, that could be a repeated action, not necessarily from this gentleman, but from other businesses.
I think, if I can, I think some of this is because the age of the city versus the age of that particular building.
Yes.
And so going forward, anybody doing anything new won't have the same, if you will, excuse that they have. So, you know, as a board, we, everybody has been good about being cognizant of setting precedent. But I think this is, would escape that, given the uniqueness and the age. But again, you know, you guys have to make the motion.
Okay.
So I'd like to go ahead and make that motion, if I got the floor. All right, for case V25-008?
Chairman, if I may interject.
Mr. O'Donnell, go ahead.
I didn't write the ordinances.
Okay.
Okay. I've been tasked, and as a group, we've been tasked to enforce the ordinances. I almost think that the two-panel slash three-panel is outdated and antiquated. It may need to be changed. And perhaps we need to talk with our commissioners and encourage them to make that amendment.
Yep.
But right now, the ordinances is two panels and only one sign. Previously, we had a, not this last Dunkin' Donuts, but one before, we denied another business the ability to put in the pre-monthly advertisement electronic board, and we said no. We've listened passionately to a woman that helped write our overlay laws and rules and ordinances. And it was her aspirations where she and the people that wrote these ordinances want our city to go, not where they're at. So as we continue this, you know, down this road, I understand that we're going to have these issues where they're tough calls. But what is the precedent that we're setting? What is the precedent that we've already decided in the past with regard to the? What is the precedent that we've already decided in the past with regard to the third sign? And if we're inconsistent, then there's no reason to have this at all. Uh, I'll table my remarks at this point.
Alright, before I make my motion, I'd like to, to further comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, I support what, what the gentleman is. Basically, this is Wendy's. This is what Wendy's done. All the Wendy's are like this. This is no different than the Wendy's five miles down the street. This is not a mom and pop restaurant. It's, this is the way Wendy's look. We all seen Wendy's. Uh, I understand, I hear what the fellow commissioner is saying, but that's why this board is in place, to be able to grant you relief where we may have outdated codes that may need to be brought up to part. It may be another five, ten years before they get this right. I, I don't know. Uh, I commend you for coming in here, asking for relief. And with that being said, I'd like to go ahead on and, uh, make a motion.
Hang on one second. Ms. Faraday?
Question, um, and this is, this is only because, um, um, Ms. Blackshire believed, um, brought this up. It's a hot, you changed these signs, this is new signs from last year?
Yes, ma'am, during our remodel last year.
And now you want to do other signs?
No, ma'am.
Okay, now what, what do you wanna do? I'm sorry, maybe I'm-
There was, there was an issue with the permits that were-
Oh, you wanna move them up to point?
This is a variance for the permits that should have been issued during our remo, or before our remodel, that we weren't, we either, women something or the contractor missed something on the height issue and we did, there are less than the square foot requirements, but, um, I think the original application for the building remodel had the, the existing signs, but then we looked at them, they were not repairable to the new standard.
But these new signs, well, the, these different signs that are height requirement would be different than what-
No, ma'am, the, the, these are smaller than the signs that were there.
Okay.
So the existing signs that are down this, you know, that are similar to the ones down the street at the Wendy's are smaller than what was there.
So if we deny, what, what would be the ramification?
I have no idea, ma'am. This is the standard Wendy's, the, the standard non-digital Wendy's menu boards like were there before are larger. They're even taller than the six feet. Um, so there's a modified, there's a special version that the other Wendy's down on John Fur Road has that is barely under, that's also just smaller than your square inch requirement and is right at six feet tall also.
I was just trying to figure out what would be the ramification if we, if we deny, like what it would be?
I'd have to go back to Wendy's and say, okay, how do I handle, what, what do I do now? So it, it was, it meets the square inch requirement, so I'm not sure about the two-panel versus three-panel part. So, and I'm trying to find the manufacturer, I know who the manufacturer is, I'm trying to contact the manufacturer, see if there's a way to either get custom brackets or something else that would lower the height record, so it would be under six feet. Um, and then this, this, removing the second sign, the smaller sign, if we had to, we could.
Uh, Ms. Faraday, um, you know, I hate reminding people, but the tradition of this board has been to let the district member in that particular district take the lead, so do you have any, uh, feelings one way or the other, uh, about making a motion or are you gonna let somebody else make a motion?
I, I don't have any, I just-
Okay, alright, good enough. Alright, so Will, Dr. Blackshire?
Yes, um, and how, how many Wendy's do y'all own?
The Wendy's group I work for owns forty-six Wendy's.
Okay, and how long have you been in this industry?
I'm sorry, say that again?
How long have you been in this industry?
I started working for Wendy's in nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And the owner started working for Wendy's in nineteen seventy-four.
Okay, alright, thank you so much.
Alright, any more questions before we take a motion? Alright, uh, Mr. Johnson, I believe you want to make a motion?
Yes, I wanna make a motion for case V two-five zero-zero-eight. Uh, I personally would like to grant the three variances that he's seeking for the, uh, additional drive-through sign and the last two variances for to increase the drive-through sign height maximum feet from six feet to six point zero-seven, which is about half of an inch.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I second.
Alright, so it's been properly moved and second, so grant the variance. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Uh, staff, would you take a hand count to, uh, make sure this is, uh, official?
Alright, can all in favor raise their hands? Can, can all, okay. All opposed, raise their hands. Alright, the opposition.
Alright, the, uh, nays have it, so motion fails for lack of agreement. Is there another motion on the floor? Are we done with this issue?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. O'Donnell, you have the floor.
Based upon what glasses I'm wearing a particular day, I think point oh-four inches, uh, is quite variable. So as a result, I would like to vote, or make a motion that we approve. Point of clarification though, cuz on our, it says that the applicant is se- seeking three variances. The fir- first variance is to add the additional drive-through sign and the last two variances are to increase the drive-through sign from maximum from six feet to six point oh-seven. That's only one item. So what is the second? I'm assuming it's the two-panel to three-panel?
Yes.
That's what, okay.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion-
I have a question, if I can.
Yep.
I read that to mean that both signs are the same six point oh-seven height, that's why they, they need the second variance for the second sign.
Say that one more time?
Both signs are six point oh-seven. They're both, they're, they're all on the same TV, on the same bracket.
Yep.
So they're the same height, six point oh-seven. So that's, that's why I assumed there was a second, but the third variance for, that was for the height of the second sign. I've not seen anything about two-panel versus three-panel.
Yes, um, for clarification, uh, when I wrote it, I had, uh, the first variance was for the second sign and the next two variances were for the height for the one sign and the other sign. So the first variance is for the, the additional sign and the second and third variance is due to the height for the menu board and then the pre-sale board.
So it's two?
Three.
It's three, okay, you're counting the signs individually?
Individually with that.
There is no issue with the two-panel versus three-panel?
Not what's, with, what's written.
I'll make a motion that we approve the height of the signs and deny, uh, on the second, uh, variance, but to deny the applicant for the pre-sale menu.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, uh, sounds like the ayes have it, but you wanna take a hand count vote, make it official?
Yes, um, can all in favor raise their hands? Alright, can all in opposition raise their hands? The motion passed.
Motion passes. Congratulations, sir. Good luck to you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move into our third case of the evening, uh, V two-five dash zero-one-zero. Zero Camelton Faber Road. The applicant is Cassius Coleman, requesting variance to section four-oh-three dot zero-three to reduce the required setbacks to section four-five dot zero-one, A subsection one to reduce landscape strips for the east, west, and south of the property to section four-five dash zero-one, B subsection one to waive the landscape buffer requirements to section four-five dash zero-one, C to waive the improvement setback to section four-five dash zero-one, D fence and wall placement to allow retaining walls within the required landscape area to section five, I'm sorry, four-oh-five subsection two-A to reduce the required landscape island in the parking areas to section four-five dash zero-two, B to eliminate the landscaped island and use the strip island in lieu of to section four-five dash zero-two, D to eliminate the requirement that all parking spaces be located within forty feet of an overhead or canopy tree into section seven-oh-seven dash zero-two to have a maximum of five wall signs when only two are allowed. Alright, is the applicant present? Please come forward, state your name, your address, and t- tell us if you are a city of South Fulton, if you don't mind, a citizen of South Fulton, rather.
Uh, good evening, my name's Cassius Coleman. I am a, uh, resident of the City of South Fulton. Um, I am the current owner, uh, of this property. Um, we acquired this property from Fulton County roughly two years ago. Uh, it took about five years to get it from the county. They put it up for auction. We own all the adjacent parcels. Uh, this is a corner lot, uh, which you guys know in development is the number one parcel. So, um, shortly thereafter acquiring this, we found out that GDOT was doing a roundabout and, uh, was going to, uh, obviously encroach, take some of the land. We actually in, we're in the process of deeding that land over as we speak. Um, our, our neighbors across the street, Starbucks got wind of it and built a huge retaining wall. And not only the original plan that, uh, GDOT had, they were taking less land, but Starbucks beat them to it. So they even pushed back further into the land, therefore really, uh, injuring us as far as what we can do on this property. You know, we've subsequently met with GDOT on several occasions with our attorneys, our civil engineers, trying to, you know, figure something out, but, uh, at the end of the day, you know, it's GDOT. So, uh, we've been, um, instructed, uh, to start the deed process and, uh, we're in, we're in motion doing that now. Uh, during this process, we, uh, have Panda Express as a potential, um, user of this property and what you see today is what they're requiring to make it fit for their particular concept. Um, you know, some of these things are absolutely, um, uh, due to the, uh, roundabout. Uh, some are just to fit within the, uh, concept scheme that they have. Uh, I'm not gonna try to explain that to you guys, I'll let them do it, they're here today as well. Uh, but, um, if we are denied all of these things, then we're really gonna be in trouble because we have Piedmont Healthcare, uh, urgent care and primary, primary care next door, we have another user on the other lot and, and basically that corner being empty is, is gonna be an eyesore. Uh, and just to be very transparent, uh, Union City, um, um, the other parcels are in, in the City of Union City, so. Um, we would love for this to, uh, obviously come to fruition for Panda. Uh, we think they'll be a good user. The city councilwoman for this district was really excited about it and, um, I actually just recently rezoned it from AG one to C two to accommodate the, uh, the use that we're talking about today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, you were reserved seven minutes. Uh, is there anyone here in opposition?
There's no opposition, but we have three more signs, I mean, three more cards for people.
Okay.
Um, good evening, I'm Eric Houston with Ingenium Enterprises, um, fifty-twenty Groover Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. Um, we're the site's civil engineers on this occasion. Um, appreciate the, the introduction and, and kinda giving you a brief overview. Um, the site does have a lot of physical constraints. Um, mostly there's only one point of access, which is from the rear. Um, if you've been to the area, you've also noticed that there's probably about twelve-foot of fall across from the rear of the site to the front of the site. So without placing retaining walls and kind of a horseshoe pattern around, um, the site is essentially undevelopable, um, which is, I guess, the, the basis for many of the variances that are being requested today, um, to, to be able to make grade. Um, additionally, as was noted, um, the Georgia Department of Transportation is taking a nice chunk off the corner, um, which is also rendering, you know, the developability and the location of where can, you know, certain things fit. Um, the, basically, um, unusable. So you can see on the screen there, um, where the, where the red line was, that was the property. They're chopping off, you know, a good thirty, thirty-five feet on that mitre, um, which is incidentally, we would have met the, the code for the setbacks for the building locations. Um, other items of note, I think, uh, Mr. Coleman's already mentioned it, um, from a, from a zoning perspective, because the adjacent sites are all in a different jurisdiction altogether, um, many of these variances are, are turning up, um, just because of that. Um, if this was a, a similar, you know, jurisdiction, these variances necessarily would have not even been applicable on this occasion, so. Um, other items of note that we are, um, wanting to highlight here, um, because there is only one point of access to the site and not two, larger vehicles, which would be, you know, emergency service vehicles, um, delivery trucks, garbage trucks, everything that is necessary to sustain the site, um, have to maneuver within the confines of that, which is why we don't have, um, you know, raised islands at the ends of that center parking bay, so trucks can turn around, ambulance can turn around, fire truck can turn around, garbage truck can turn around, um, which is, which is the reason for, for the variance request. Um, at this point in time, I think I'd just like to keep the balance of my time to answer any questions or assuage staff for any of the additional concerns, um, or what, you know, any questions of what could be negotiated here.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that just-
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I move to come out of public, to, I, excuse me, I move that we move into public discussion. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second to go into public discussion on V two-five dash zero-one-zero, zero Camelton Faber Road. Alright, so we'll start on this end this time. Ms. Faraday, you have any questions of the applicant?
Did you read the hardship criteria?
We did.
You did?
Yep.
So explain to me your hardship.
Um, specific to which variance?
All of them.
Okay. Fair, fair enough. So, um, the, number one, obviously, um, we have, the, the site is where the site is, right? So this, this particular site is marooned in the City of South Fulton with everything around it being Union City. I, I, I can't, I can't change the, the neighbors. Um, the site does have twelve-foot of fall, which is why we need retaining walls to be able to build the site up, which need to be in the locations that they are in order to, to actually have any site that would work here on this occasion. So twelve to fifteen-foot of fall, that's the, the reasoning for that. And then similarly, the, the remainder of the variances and, and the site plan, um, provided is mostly due to, you know, like I said, service vehicles, garbage trucks, those types of things that have to access the site. Is there a specific one that you would like me to, to address?
I was just listening to your, um, I was listening to you, to both of you and, uh, you didn't really explain a hardship. Only thing I heard was it was an eyesore and it may cause physical constraints. But according to our hardship, um, criteria, I was trying to pull out what is your hardship in comparison to what you read here.
I mean, I think, I mean, the G, GDOT made this a hardship, to be quite frank. Um, taking a corner from this particular parcel is greatly, uh, diminishing the value, number one, and also limiting the use for it. Um, just say this goes away, Panda goes away, uh, we're gonna be hard pressed to find someone else, to be quite frank, which is a hardship to, um, the owners. So I wanna make sure you understand the owner's hardship, uh, just in general, whether it's Panda or anyone else.
So you're, you're, um, afraid of losing to your clients?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
I have no more questions.
Ms. Did you have a question, Mr. O'Donnell?
Uh, come back to me.
Okay. Ms. Patterson?
Thank you. Um, this question is for, um, first, let me just clarify something with the staff. So the way this chart is written, there's like one through nine. Are you all breaking up the request into these nine pieces or is it all or nothing? Way that you're, the, the request is written? There's like Z one through Z nine. Cuz there's a lot to consider and I just wanna understand how, how to respond.
Yes, this was just a more simplified way to look at them, um, by that chart. So it could be all or, all or nothing.
That's the only option, all or nothing?
Yeah, that's our recommendation, but you all can break it off as you wish, right? This is our recommendation.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. So the reason why I ask that is I understand the hardship. And let me just confirm, I understand where the location is. Is, is the lot next to you the auto zone or something?
No, um, so it's, we're directly, uh, so you know where the Starbucks is on Hall Road? So we're at the corner of Hall Road and Highway ninety-two.
So you're on the other side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I know where you are, okay. That, that helps. That, that helps me where that light is.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
So I understand by looking at this that, and I appreciate this diagram because it's saying like for Z1, you're getting a cutoff there. For Z2, you know, impacts and so forth. I go through that area quite a bit. It is a confusing area because of the variance, the different jurisdictions. I'm inclined though to ask a couple of questions about some of these sub, I'll call them sub variances. So can, and I, and I heard you, there's a rear entrance. I see the requirement, there's a, I guess, to access and come in. You can't come in but one, is it two ways or just the one from the back?
Just the one from the back.
Just the one, right? Okay. So the request for, and it looks like it would be Z, it's a side, it's the side setback. So I'm guessing is it Z4 and 5? Let's go with Z4.
Z4.
Z4. Can you clarify for, for, for my point? What is the issue with that space there? What are you, what are you suggesting? Is the green saying that that's what you, what does that represent?
Yes, the green is the area that we can't put landscape on, everything else we can. I would like to point out that the side adjacent to Georgia Highway 92, I think it is, there is a swell in there for storm drainage. So even if we wanted to put landscape in that area, we can't because that's already dedicated to storm.
What letter is that? Excuse me. The Z what?
2.
Z2.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And then Z4, where is that? That's in the private road, that entrance road.
Cause it's a budding, because it's a budding Union City.
So what I was trying to understand, is this green aspect of the diagram what you would have to add? Or is it what you're suggesting that you take away?
It's what we are suggesting to take away.
Thank you. Okay. And I do have one more question. For Z, so for Z6, are you, is that green piece what was existing and you're asking to take it away? Or is it something that you're wanting to put in place?
For, for Z6, we're looking to just reduce the, the landscape island at the end cap. It's, it doesn't meet the, the full size of the 200 square feet.
And that is the, as you stated, was that to ease the turnaround?
It is as well. You can see where the dumpster is in that area. It is in, close to the dumpster for, for be able to kind of access it. That is one of the items, however, that could be bettered, if, if I may. Maybe not to the full extent of the code, but it could be bettered.
Improved.
Improved. Widen maybe just a little bit.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I, I just want to get this straight. Because there's a lot in this table. And there's a lot of sub pieces, so I want it, because I'm there every day, I'm in this area, I just want to.
And we want you to be there every day doing Panda.
Okay. For letter nine.
Yes, ma'am. I don't think that's any, anything really that's dissimilar, that's not already seen this evening. To essentially, just like every other business, you know, from, from an operational invisibility standpoint, signage isn't essential component of their, of their business.
Okay. I have one, sorry, one last. So you have right now, this may be for the gentleman in the blue. You have a potential buyer or a potential, or have they already acquired?
Oh, no. Not until these variances are approved.
Okay, got you.
Yeah. So this is very much so contingent upon the outcome of this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Ross Westbrook, 1058 Cherry Bark Trace, Marietta, Georgia. I'm, I'm the Panda Real Estate Manager that did the deal. This deal, we're not, we don't have a signed purchase agreement. We have a signed, we have a purchase agreement, 95% negotiated with Cassius's group. It is real estate committee approved, so from our perspective, the money is set aside. And as soon as we get zoning and have all the approvals and run through our due diligence, the, the deal would go forward. So there's nothing holding us up except for the governmental approvals.
Thank you for that. I have no further questions.
Dr. Blackshear, do you have anything?
Not at this time.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I just wanted to say, yeah, I, I live on that street. I saw the signs up. And I support what you guys are doing. I understand the relief that you're asking for. There's absolutely no way you could be, you gotta get us relief to do, to be.
Functional.
Yeah, be functional. So I just want you to know I, I, I support it. So there's no pushback on any one of the variances from my end.
Okay. One last question about item Z8, please. There is a parking space shall be more, no parking space may, so what is in that area? Is there, I see the dumpsters, right? Is that what the dumpsters are?
Yeah, so Z8 is actually basically at, in any of the parking bays. Drive aisles are 24 feet wide, spaces are 18, 18 to 20 feet wide. So if I didn't have a landscape island there, then naturally there wouldn't be a shade tree within 40 feet if you just added those two numbers up.
Okay.
If, if at all, you know, for, for consideration, we will relook at it. But if there's a, an island in the middle of that parking lot where it's maybe not 40 feet, but it may be 50 feet away from a tree, you know, there's a potential that we could, you know, work with staff to kind of make that work.
Can, because I'm hearing you, you, you say that there's a little bit of flexibility in there. Can you clarify for the board, the, the items regarding these landscaping islands?
Certainly.
That are going to create potential safety issues with regard to getting emergency vehicles in and out?
Right. So variance number Z7, those are the striped islands at the end caps. Those are essential for, for all of the, the larger vehicles. Z8 and Z6, which is also basically an end cap variance as well as the 40 foot tree separation variance. Those, you know, obviously would result in, in a loss of parking for, for the applicant, which would, you know, obviously hurt their business. But it is something obviously that is negotiable that we could work with, with staff to kind of come up with, with the best possible solution to, to meet the intent of the code as, to the maximum extent possible.
So to clarify that then, I don't have a question about one. I don't have a question about two. I'm trying to, the ones that are inside of the.
You good with that?
You didn't. Yeah, I'm sorry.
If I may, if I may, I can just actually physically show you.
That, please, that would help.
Yeah, that would be great.
If, if I may, so I've just sketched it here. If we just placed two islands here, here and here. Those are approximately 80 feet apart. So 80 feet divided by two is 40. That means that, you know, kind of the, these parking spaces would be covered. Similarly, we'll try to do something like that in the middle as well. And it may offset, so we may do an island here and maybe an island there, something to, to try to, to make it work as best as possible. Here in this area, obviously if you discuss, it's just very difficult to handle.
And those are, that's Z7?
That's Z7. Z7 is probably the, the one that is the most essential for the, for the purposes of functionality of the site.
Okay.
And just on the Z7, just to be clear, it's a little confusing. I'm sorry. On, on Z7, that's just a striped area. So it's not a raised curb. So when those larger vehicles come in, they don't have to negotiate that curb. It's a little, it's not.
I, I, I just have a little small question.
Dr. Blackshear, you have floor.
Can you expound a little bit more on your visibility in order to benefit whoever your potential client is?
The visibility of, of the signage, you mean?
Right.
Specifically of the signage?
For that area.
Obviously you have the corridor.
And I, and I ask because I'm not really familiar.
Certainly. So southbound traffic, as you can kind of see on the screen, you can see that there is a building that's actually pushed up pretty far to the road in the city of Union City.
Right.
So it's going to obviously block the, the path, visibility path to the front door, which is obviously the, the shiny beautiful side of the build. They're all, they're all beautiful. But that, that's the, the big thing, the entrance where you, where you'd see, you know, customers wanting to come in. Compounded with that, obviously the elevation changes that we've already mentioned, the site being enclosed basically with a 10 foot retaining wall.
Correct.
That is also going to hinder the visibility of the building and everything else on top.
Exactly. So that's why I was just wanting to understand, so that when I go to that area, I can know exactly what I'm looking at.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Just so I understand. Just so I understand, I, I got a little bit confused myself. The green area is actually what you're removing. So you're going, clarify that for me, because I, I understood that that was going to end up being your actual landscaped area, but you're actually removing that area. Is that correct?
Yeah, got you.
I also want to identify myself as I did it earlier. My name is Lizbeth Lutwiler. I'm with Ingenium Enterprises. I'm the civil engineer for this project. The arrow shows the line furthest out for the proposed landscape strip. And the in, inner line, the green dash line shows what is required. So the green space in between those two green lines is what we cannot provide.
Okay. How tall are these retaining walls going to be?
It ranges, the tallest is going to be 10 feet. Possibly more on the back, but we meet the criteria in the back.
The hash marks, is that concrete just with striping?
Yes.
So is it possible to make that green? And I'm talking about.
By the drive-through, right?
Yes.
Yes. It, it, it is a possibility, however, for the fire trucks and emergency services, we want them to have access to that area as well. That's the reason why we put the striping there as opposed to landscape.
Okay. And what's the occupancy of the restaurant expected to be?
I have it right here, 58 seats.
To improve upon some of your buffers, would reducing the parking be beneficial? Or is that something that you don't want to do?
That's something we don't want to do to meet, yeah, to meet the requirements of the business.
Though, though Panda Express is a, is a recognized QSR, because the food isn't handheld, more people actually drive to it. So it functions a little bit more like a sit-down restaurant because people go and sit down and eat and don't have it, like eating it in the car. Also, the other big item is, one of the biggest appeals actually is going in, seeing the food, selecting what you want that day, you know, kind of seeing it all. So it functions a little bit differently. That's why they have a little bit higher percentage of people actually eating in the dining room as opposed to going through the drive-through.
Okay. Just trying to balance business versus being green. I don't have any further questions.
Ms. Patterson?
The navy blue line, what, what does that indicate? The dotted, the hashed blue line?
That is the new setback that is basically created, or I guess that was where the setback would have been, which we would have met had the right-of-way taking from GDOT not occurred. So if you see, our building would have been within the confines of that blue area, which would have met both, both frontages. And you see where the dash blue line is, that's where the setback is now based. Is where, you know, the, the right-of-way taking on the mitre has occurred.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
I have one last question.
Dr. Blackshear?
Thank you. What's the expected traffic for that location? Based on Panda Express?
Based on Panda Express, so typically speaking, in the peak volume, which can be lunch or, or dinner depending on, on the market. IT says it's 43 in, 43 out. So something like that, 44 in, 44 out.
And I'll make one last comment. We, we do agree with the roundabout to a certain extent because traffic in that area is, has picked up big time because of all the development, you know, and, and the multifamily that's there. So we understand, you know, why it's happening, but we, we don't want to, we don't want to get killed because of it, so.
Ms. O'Donnell, you have something else?
What was the need for five wall signs again?
Cause you got two, your building faces the street on two sides.
Obviously we have rear entry, which there's a signage obviously to basically let the guest know where, where they're at. And then you've got the signs from the two other sides. The reason there's five, you've got one over the drive-through, one at the short front, and then one obviously over the entrance. One particular sign because it has both a symbol and text, technically counts as two.
Okay. You heard earlier Chick-fil-A, you know, they're basically across the street from you.
Right.
They have more land than you, obviously.
Right.
But their setup is exactly the same where as far as you're going to have to come in to their, off of the main road, come around to the back. And they were able to survive with three signs. We just approved another one today. Do you think that's reasonable?
I think, I think so.
Yeah, very reasonable.
I have some elevations I'd like to show staff.
I'm sorry, start over for me.
I would, I have elevations that I would like to show staff of the proposed signage. I want to show that it's not going to hinder the code that you guys have, if I would like to present.
Make, make your case.
Okay. So can I?
You mean show board.
Board, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You, you can start over there.
There are the signs that we're proposing. A lot of it is standard Panda signs. As you can see, they're not huge, size are very minimal. And it just helps guests identify where they're going. I, I think it's, I think it's going to be.
What is it with the two? What does it reflect with the two?
The two that are required will be. I don't know how, just the two, but it would only be the, the drive-through.
Okay.
And what would be a third? What's the preferred one out of these?
Yes, it's the all five. So we want to do the preferred three, you know, that's.
I don't care about the vertical. I care about, we call this a lockup. I care about that one and the horizontal. So if I can have, you know, we may forego the one that's on 92 facing west because we're going to be hidden anyway. Maybe we go front side and rear because you've got a lot of traffic coming from like schools in the back. That's a end of apartments in the back. So yeah, we can, we can make sense of the wall.
This is the drive-through facing the front of the site. This is the highway side.
Thank you.
All right. You guys done making your case?
Just for, for clarification purposes, we've, we're willing to, to do what we just said we would do on zoning case number nine on this. And then obviously after what I've beautifully sketched up here, we will, I guess, rescind number six and number eight in order to, to do our absolute best to kind of comply with. in order to, to do our absolute best to kind of comply with those two.
So, you're right now saying that you're taking six and eight?
Well, I mean, you say, we just said to make the, the minimum landscape on that one side and then putting in the landscape islands to try to, to do however you want to.
I have a feeling the motion was going to be contingent upon you doing that, so. Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Doc.
I move to close, um, questions.
I second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, come out of public hearing, uh, on V two-five dash zero-one-zero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, we are out of public discussion, and, uh.
I have a motion. Chair.
Ms. Patterson has a motion for us.
Okay. I move to modify, okay? Um, I move to, um, the, the plaint, the request, the, the, the persons. Let me, let me start over, y'all, I'm sorry. For V two-five zero-one-zero, it was suggested by the requister to remove subsection Z six, Z eight, and to modify Z nine to include three signs. Given those modifications, I move to approve Z one through five, Z seven, and the modified term of Z nine, which would be for three signs instead of two, but not five.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, motion passes, so you guys, uh, have your variances that you have requested. Congratulations and good luck.
Appreciate it.
All right, let's continue moving ahead.
I drive by there every day. What's the planned opening date? How many months I gotta wait?
Eighteen.
All right, thank you.
Can I give you guys something?
No, you can't give us, no, 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 we can't take it. Nah, you're not here, not in the city of South Fulton. Not in the city of South Fulton.
I gotta ask you.
Yeah, nah. No, 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 no. All right, we're going to go into, uh, our next case, uh, which is, uh, V two-five dash zero-one-one. Six-seven-two-five Short Road. The applicant is Juan Villalobos, requesting a variance to section four-oh-three dash zero-three setbacks to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to nineteen feet on the north side of the building. Uh, is the applicant here? Sir, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us if you are.
My name is Juan Villalobos, and my address sixty-seven-twenty-five Short Road, Fairbun, Georgia, through, uh, three-zero-two-one-three.
City of South Fulton?
City of South Fulton.
Yes, sir, okay. Go ahead.
Um, well, I tried to, I don't know, when I'm building the house, I don't know, the, it has to be like twenty-five feet away from the property line, and it's an old house in there, and the old house is seventeen feet from the property line. So, I don't know, if you are, no, I don't do whatever. Um, I say, okay, uh, this, I, I think that's normal, seventeen feet. Then I started building from there. I wanted like twenty-five or thirty, but it come into the middle of the driveway. Then I said, no, it's, I'm going like, but I'm going two feet more than the old house. So, I said, maybe that's, I said, that's okay for me, you know, I don't know. If you are, no, absolutely, I don't do it there. Um, I like it, everything's right, but I don't know. So, I'm thinking that's normal, because I see the old house is seventeen feet. And, you know, it's my first house, I never haven't done that. But now, if you are doing another one, I have an opportunity to do another one, I know. And that's not going to happen again.
All right, uh, is there anyone here in opposition?
We do have one card in opposition.
Okay. With the person in opposition. Do you have anything else to present your case, or you want to reserve, reserve the rest of your time? You want to reserve? Okay.
No, I don't know nothing.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, uh, we have.
Eddie Turner for opposition.
Mr. Turner, you want to step to the podium and state your case for opposition to approving this variance? Just state your name and address, sir.
Six-seven-sixty Charlotte Road, Fairbun, Georgia, three-zero-two-one-three. And, uh, my name is Eddie Turner.
Go ahead, state your case.
Well, I don't even know what it's about. I was just told to come here, so.
Who told you to come here?
I got a letter in the mail.
You got a letter in the mail to come here? Are you, uh, in, in favor of, uh, this variance being approved, or you're in opposition of it?
No.
Yeah.
No to which?
Are you in favor?
I'm not in favor.
You're not, okay.
You're in opposition of the variance. Uh, where does your property sit in relation to six-two, uh, six-seven-two-five Short Road?
What's the relation?
What, what is your address again?
Six-seven.
Six-seven?
Six.
Six-seven-six-zero. Six-seven-six-zero Short Road.
Right.
Are you the next-door neighbor? Are you the, the back, you're the next-door neighbor? Y- y- you with, Mr. Turner, you, you want to come up? So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to guide us through here. Uh, you, you see, uh, what's on your screen here? Are, are you the neighbor, uh, directly next to him, where y- y- you would be encroached by the setback? Or are you on the other side? Just tell me where you are in relation to what we're looking at on the screen, this house here. Yes, sir. Let, let's do, let's, let's, let's do that. Let, let's, let. Six-seven-six, but let's, let's take Mr. McClendon's advice first, and we'll come back to that. So, is there a motion on, on the floor?
So, does, does he have any other, does he have anything else he wants to say, the applicant?
Yeah. Yes, the applicant has eight minutes and thirty seconds of rebuttal time.
Yeah, he's got reserved time. They hadn't even said anything, though, and, and so that's why I was waiting. But, Mr. Turner, uh, let's let, uh, Mr. Villalobos, uh, state his case. Chairman, I just, I just wanted to show you the question. Hang on, hang on, hang on, we got a whole lot going on. Mr. Don, you had point of order?
If we go on to have the gentleman speak again, he's in rebuttal mode, which means that this gentleman didn't, will, will not get an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And I do not understand what his address is.
Please speak into the mic.
If we go into, if we allow, uh, the gen- the applicant to speak again, that would be in rebuttal period, which means that this gentleman will not get an opportunity to speak. I do not understand his address at this point, nor do I understand his opposition. And I would like to hear this gentleman before we move forward.
And, and I, I understand that, Mr. O'Donnell, but we have gotten into kind of question-and-answer mode.
Right.
And so, what I, my suggestion was that, instead of asking him questions during.
His time. Yeah. I, I under- I understood, Mr. McClendon and, and, and I'm on, as, as the chair, I'm going to take privilege to take Mr. McClendon's, uh, adv- advice. Um, nobody's going to be denied the opportunity to speak. I, I definitely am not going, uh, uh, deny Mr. Turner, uh, his, his full voice, uh, because it's important, but in, in, in the, uh, in the effort to be efficient, I, I think Mr. McClendon has a point. So, uh, I'll, I'll entertain a motion right now as, uh, as it pertains to public discussion.
I, I make a motion to, are we in the public discussion at this time? I make a motion for case V two-five dash zero-one-one to end public discussion.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded, come out of public discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are out of public discussion. Okay, so, at this time, it's going to be more question, uh, and then you can answer. But, please, uh, and, and step back up, ma'am, if you will. Uh, can you tell us where your house is, is, is in relation to this house on, on the map? Are you the next-door neighbor?
Yeah, I'm next door to what he's tearing the trees down over there. Six-seven-sixty Charlotte Road.
Hang on one second. So, we're out of pub discussion. Are there questions from board members? All right, go ahead, sir, uh, state your opposition to.
What do you need to?
What is your opposition to his request for variance?
No, because, uh, the land belongs to me there.
Uh, so you're, you're saying the land that he's building on belongs to you?
Yes, it does. Next to.
Let me, uh, are you directly next to him, or are you across the street?
We're on the, we're on the same side. He on this side of the fence, and we on this side of the fence.
So, it's just a fence separated, your, your property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Turner, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at a.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Yes. I'm looking at a map here. It shows your house, actually, your property across the street from him.
No, we're not actually across the street. I'm on the same side next to him.
Okay, so.
It's a fence.
Yes, so I'm looking at, so, but six-seven-sixty, that's the address you gave, correct?
Correct.
Six-seven-sixty is across the street.
It's next to him. It's not across the street. I don't know what you did there. Across the street, it's there.
Okay.
We on the same side.
Well, typically, odd numbers and even-number addresses are.
Right, on the same side, yeah. And odd numbers on the opposite, right.
I don't know nothing about the normals. That's my normal, what he called, I don't know. All I know is he's building on the opposite side of the fence from my house.
Okay, so, maybe you're talking about a different address then, because his address sixty-seven-twenty-five is right next to, uh, James and Joseph Farlow.
Yes, right on down the road farther from me.
On the other side, we on the other side. Yes, ma'am, I totally hear you. But that address is the one that directly next door to his address. And on the other side of him is John and Valerie. Uh, it just went out. I got to pull it up again here. But, but neither one.
At sixty-seven.
Yes, yeah, so I got to pull it up again here, because I just lost it here.
Okay, why, why are you waiting? Any other board members have a question, uh?
I'm just trying to get clarity on this, because it's, it's got to be incorrect. Something is definitely wrong with, with the logistics of this situation, for sure. Um, because normally, like we were saying, odd numbers on one side, even numbers on, on the other side. This, you're saying there, you all are directly next door, which is a fence aligned in between your property and his property.
Point of order.
Okay.
Yes.
So, uh, on the, on the screen now is the land use map showing the different locations. Six-seven-twenty-five is right over here.
Yes.
And six-seven-twenty is down here.
That's exactly what I'm showing. That's exactly what I just showed the chair.
What'd you say your address?
Six-seven-sixty Charlotte Road.
Six-seven-sixty.
Yeah, six-seven-six-zero, and it's showing your name, Eddie L. Turner.
Yes, me.
Yes, sir. And that is the property that she's showing in that corner across the street from Mr. Villalobos.
I think I understand.
How does he cross the street, and we right beside one another, just like we are? Across the street as you cross over there.
All right, uh, let's, 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 let's bring it back to, uh, order, please. Uh, Dr. Blackshear, you have something?
Yes, so, who is in, what is that, um?
Six-seven-forty-five?
This one right here.
Yep, James and Joseph Farlow.
Right here. Six-seven-forty-five.
Yeah, James and Joseph Farlow.
James and Joseph Farlow.
Yeah, let me show you, look here. This is his property, six-seven-twenty-five.
Sir, may I ask you a question?
Hang, hang on a second, let me ask the floor. Dr. Blackshear, are you done?
So, unless the addresses are wrong.
All right, uh, Ms. O'Donnell had a question. Go ahead, Ms. O'Donnell, you have floor.
Question for you, uh, a- as far as the, uh, location of your property. Uh, please come on up here, and I, I've got this on the Google Maps. And I'm just wondering if that's your house right there near the corner of Short Road and Rivertown.
Yep.
Yeah, the first house.
Right there, right?
Right.
And then they got the cow pasture right next to that cow pasture? And they've cleared out all of these trees, right? Over here.
Oh, yeah, that's on the other side.
Yes. So, I think where we're at is this is a pulty, or this is a subdivision that's going in there, and they've clear-cut all of that. What we're talking about in this case is this property here, you know that white farmhouse that they put in down the street from you? And they put a, 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 a four-board, uh, a fence all the way around it? It's kind of across the street from you, and then as you go out your driveway to the right. Yeah, they, they just put up two white pillars, uh, at the end of the driveway with a gate.
I know where the problem is.
That's on the outside, but it's split down the road.
I think what he's saying is you're confusing this general project with.
Correct.
They require that they send these out to, uh, neighboring residents. Uh, but it doesn't mean that that particular project is the one right next door to you. The requirement, when we have various applications, is that they have to send out. Hey, no, you. Step back behind the podium for me, please, so we can, everybody can hear your comments. Yeah.
So, what is it that you're asking, that you keep saying right across from me? When ain't nothing going, you across the street, distance beside of me right here.
Yeah.
Coming in my driveway, they're on the left side of the fence. I'm on the right side of the fence.
But what he's.
So, further down the road, you saying by digging in something, what does that got to do with me? Nothing.
Right. Yeah, that, that's the point he's making. What, what's going on across the street from, I'm sorry, what's going on right next to you is not his project. That's a different project. He sent you a le- he sent you a notice, a letter as required by staff.
It's right next door.
Well, geographically, that's not possible, because you, you guys are even-numbered address, and this is an odd-numbered address, and the staff, along with some board members, have already pointed out on the map.
It's going to be, uh.
That it's a different prop- different property.
It's going to be odd.
Chairman, could I add something to that?
Mr. Johnson, you have floor.
Hey, Mr. Turner, I, I hear what you're saying, but what y'all might not realize, next door to you is eighty-two acres, and it's owned by, uh, Century Communities. That's a big deal next to you. That's a, he's sitting on four-point, he, he's sitting on four and a half acres where he's at. This development that's coming next to you is much bigger than he are. It's eighty-one acres. Huge. And I think that's what you have in mind.
No.
Okay.
No.
Sir, if you, if you want to walk over here, I can show you where it's eighty-one acres.
I'm there, I know.
Wait, yes, sir.
You showing me this here? I'm at the house, I know.
I, I understand, sir.
I'm on the li- I'm on the right side of going in my driveway.
Right.
The project is going on on the left side of the fence, going down in between the two land.
Okay, alright, so you've made your case. You've made your case, we're gonna, uh, give Mr. Villalobos a chance to rebut, but we, we hear you sir, we're gonna take your, uh, case on advisement, okay?
May I see your letter before you step away?
Mr. Villalobos, you have the floor, uh, to rebut. Is the applicant.
Y'all are out of public hearing?
Mr. Villalobos. Is, is that your daughter?
Yeah.
Does she help you with English and translation? Would you wanna bring her up to the podium with you? Come, come on, I'll step up. I- is there anything that your father has expressed that you'd like to, uh, make clear if you feel like he hadn't expressed, expressed clearly?
Um, it was just like the setback of where the house, of the back of the houses. It's seventeen or nineteen feet and it's supposed to be twenty to twenty-five feet. And twenty-five feet, and we needed like get it like more, like at least get like a variance so that it could be good.
Yeah, we, we understand that.
Cause we can't just push the house, so.
Got you, okay. Uh. Any board members have any questions at this time? Mr. O'Donnell.
First of all, as far as the zoning board, uh, signs, the notice, who's responsible for putting those up?
We create the signs, but the applicant is responsible for posting the sign.
And if I'm correct, they're supposed to be at a perpendicular ninety degrees to the road. Is that correct?
I will have to check the code and get back to you with the answer for that question.
While we're waiting for that, my question to you, uh, as far as where you rebuilt, right, the original foundation, correct? Did you go any closer to the, uh, neighbors or, or did you start there and work your way in towards the inside of your lot?
No, 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 to the neighbor. Okay, before it's seventeen feet, then I started nineteen feet. Also, I go in two feet more to my property. Because I thinking, I said, before seventeen feet, and I said, but I move it a little bit, I wanna move it more, but it's going to my, in the middle of the driveway. Then I say, okay, I move it, um, seven, nineteen feet. It's like when they market the property to put my fence, I going a little bit into my property and I'll leave it a little bit to the neighbor or to the street. No, I don't wanna have a problem with them.
So you moved the house two feet into your property?
Yeah, 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 with that, where it's before, the old house. It's a old house before.
Okay, and does staff have the, uh, a copy of the box check that was rejected? Supposedly the, there was a box check that, that has failed. Uh, in, in the past, we've had applicants that said that, um, there was confusion as far as the actual documentation in the paperwork. And I just wanna make sure that the city has actually followed, uh, proper procedure. Because we have not done that in the past, uh, a lot during the transition. This may not apply, but I just wanna ensure.
So the box check is within the case file for this case, but it is not within the staff report?
Okay, and the notice? The signage?
The signage, so our signs are one-sided, so it has to be where all the writing is facing the roadway.
I have no further questions.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes, I have a question. The, um, house was, the original was torn down and then the new one was, did you have to submit a blueprint to get approval before you started the house?
Yes.
And did you get approval for it at the nineteen feet? Did you get approval for?
No, 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 I not put attention, or they not, I not tell them, or they not ask me, or. Yeah, no, no, if you like, I said, like, if you are not in the beginning, oh, no, I move it. Yeah, I don't know, it's my first house I'm building and I never, and this kinda deal, and that's why. And I'm thinking, I say, oh, the house, I'm mature, I say seventeen feet, oh, I going the same, but I said.
You did two more.
Two more, I, to in my property.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, um, so from what I'm looking at here, um, Mr. Villalobos, behind you is, uh, is owned by Union City, right? Well, you might not know this, but it's about forty acres, all, it's not a house behind you, correct?
I don't think so.
No, no, it's to the other road.
Yeah, so you're not encroaching upon another hole. You're not getting close to another hole?
No.
Yeah, okay, that's all I got. Yes, it's, still, this is Dr. Blackshire.
Dr. Blackshire?
No, that was gonna be my question.
Mr. O'Donnell? Does anybody on the board have any more questions? Okay, at this time, uh, Mr. O'Donnell said you'd like to make a motion?
I want you to know that, I really do, I, I love your house. It's beautiful, what you've done so far.
Thank you so much.
I've used your property as an example of what we actually kinda wanna build out in our area as opposed to the subdivision that's going in across your street. I've got numerous pictures of your property. I have two concerns however, and it has to do with the process and the notification. I drive by your property every single day going to work, every day. I live right down the road from you. I did not see a sign that has been posted out there for thirty days.
The variance?
Yeah, it's. The sign. Yeah. And I was surprised, now, on Monday, I went and spoke to the neighbor that's on, on the right-hand side of your property, because that's who you're closest to. And asked them if they were aware of the, the variance. I knocked on the door, uh, spoke to a nice woman, you know, and asked her if she was aware and she said, well, no, and she didn't seem too opposed to it. But she didn't even understand what was going on. So I would like to make a motion that we table this for thirty days. Uh, so that we ensure that the neighbors around that area are, have a clear understanding of what we're talking about with this particular case. The sign is up, it went up the following day on Tuesday. This letter was sent on the twenty-ninth of August, which is less than thirty days notice. So that, that's the the reason for my motion.
Should properly moved and second, all in favor of deferring this case until the next board meeting, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes and this is, this case is deferred until our next meeting, sir. Uh, well, you guys give us that, and I'll put it in the record.
The next variance meeting day is on October sixteenth.
Okay, so unless you hear that it's, it's been postponed, this case is gonna be deferred until October four, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, uh, I think you're talking about the sign, right? I did it, I put it, she give it to me, she handed to me, in that moment when she give it to me, I put in the fence and she told me, sending me a picture, and I send it to her and it's right there right now.
You got thirty more days to come in and make your case real convincingly, sir, and we'll hear you out, okay?
And talk with that neighbor, make sure they're good with it, to your right.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, so my neighbor, the, the husband, I think?
The owner in the house, she's the new girlfriend, and, oh, he's over there with me every day. He know and I talk to him.
Yes, sir. You'll have thirty days to get your case together and make your case again and we promise you, we'll, we'll give you, uh, a full listening, okay?
Okay, next month. Okay, believe it, the sign in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the sign is in the fence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and move to case V two five dash zero one two, that's forty-one oh five Roosevelt Highway. The applicant is Henry Bailey, care of Greg Bowler, requesting a variance to section fourteen dash seven zero zero four to impact the fifty-feet undisturbed buffer and twenty-five feet non-imperious buffer to allow for the construction of a light industrial warehouse facility. Uh, is the applicant present?
We are.
Please step to the podium and state your name. Uh, does anybody wanna make a motion to go into public discussion?
I'll make a motion to go into public discussion on case V twenty-five dash zero one two.
I'll second it.
Should properly moved and second to go into public discussion on V two five dash zero one two, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are in public discussion on this case. Uh, will the applicant please, Ms. McClendon, do you have something for us?
I do, I did wanna give a quick, uh, staff introduction on this case. Reggie McClendon, Managing Director of the Community Development and Regulatory Affairs Department, uh.
Ms. McClendon, can we get that door closed? There's a lot of outside doors. Okay.
Alright, so the, the reason I wanted to intro, um, this case, uh, for you all is because you all received these staff reports, um, in your emails, probably about a week ago if I remember correctly. Um, on that, on the staff, the report that you received in your email, staff's recommendation was denial. Uh, you have received an updated staff report tonight in which staff's recommendation has changed from denial to approval conditional, uh, and I did want to offer, uh, a very brief explanation for that. Uh, and after I offer that explanation, I'm going to take my leave and leave this in the hands of my capable staff. Um, this is a request for a stream buffer variance, um, stream, there are multiple stream buffer variances, stream buffer requirements that are placed, um, on properties when development is going to be in the vicinity of a stream. Um, the, the areas directly adjacent to that stream are, um, are governed by the State of Georgia, uh, the Department of Natural Resources, uh, and then the city, uh, of South Fulton has additional buffering requirements uh, in addition to what the state requires. Um, this particular project, um, in order for the developer to build in the fashion that they are attempting to develop, they would have needed, um, approval from the state, uh, as well as additional approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. We did not have that paperwork when we, uh, sent you the staff report a week ago. Um, but subsequently to that, we have, um, received and you have copies in your, um, in the staff reports that you have in front of you of the, um, of the approvals from the State of Georgia as well as the approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, and so in taking that information into account, we have amended our recommendation from denial to approval conditional. And there are a number of conditions that the state as well as the Army Corps has, um, has placed on the, on this, on their applications. Uh, and so, um, the conditions that we are requesting are those same conditions that the Department of Natural Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, has, has requested, and all of that's in the paperwork in front of you. Uh, and so with that being said, I'll take my seat, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, does the applicant wanna come on up and state your name and address and if you're resident of the city of South Fulton, then make your case?
Yes, sir, thank you, this, uh, for, for having us this evening. My name is Henry Bailey, I'm counsel for the applicant. Um, and my address is thirty-three forty-three Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, Clark Hill, P L C. Um, you have in front of you and on the screen, the presentation tonight, that we'll go over here very briefly, uh, to describe to you the request uh, in more detail than Director McClendon has described, but which was very accurate description of what we are requesting. Um, so just to give you a little back, a little bit of backdrop and the project overview initially, um, the developer here is Greg Bowler, seated here, uh, the managing director and founder of K M T Partners. His address is forty-one oh five Roosevelt Highway, roughly seventeen acres. Site is partially wooded, uh, with a portion of the site, a major portion of the site, and which is a critical element of this request uh, occupied by abandoned right of way. And Antonio Sample, who just passed out the presentation to you, will describe to you how that affects what the proposal is and how, uh, how what we're proposing helps alleviate some of the concerns that are existing today with that. Um, the developer is, is seeking to re- redevelop this site with a roughly two hundred and thirteen thousand square foot warehouse facility, which will at the end, uh, once it's completed, create roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred full-time jobs. Now, we filed an application for, uh, the rezoning on this property back in twenty twenty-four. We've had several meetings with the public, um, three, I believe to be exact, that we did throughout this process at the request, as a part of the, the normal rezoning process, as a part of requests from council members, and as a second request from the council members, um, to make sure that we talk to any and everybody about this project. And so throughout that coordination with the neighborhood, throughout the, the entirety of that process, it came to be known that there needed to be some sort of consideration given to the traffic components on this, on, at this part of Roosevelt. So as a part of the, of the approval that we received from city council and city of South Fulton, um, the unanimous approval, there was also a condition that the applicant was gonna contribute a hundred thousand dollars to the installation of a traffic signal there, which we did after we got a traffic, a signal warrant and analysis done through G dot. Um, so at this point, I'll pass the, the microphone and the presentation over, uh, to, to Antonio Sample to discuss, uh, to discuss the technical aspects of this request. Thank you all.
Is everybody doing tonight?
Good, give us your name and address, please.
Antonio Sample, uh, twenty-nine fifty-one Flowers Road.
Is that city of South Fulton?
Atlanta, Georgia.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Alright, next one, please. So, one more. So our request is, uh, the applicant seeking, uh, a variance to impact the city's fifty-foot undisturbed buffer and, uh, to construct a light industrial warehouse, uh, per section fourteen seven zero zero six. Applicant also has already filed a concurrent, uh, stream buffer variance through the Georgia E P D and a nationwide permit through U S Army Corps of Engineers, like Director McClendon, uh, stated. We received both approvals from the Army Corps and the E P D. Uh, if you're looking at the exhibit, uh, the said stream that we're impacting, it kinda, uh, dissects the site. It, with, with that stream, it cuts off our access that almost thirty percent of the, the northern portion of the property. Uh, the site itself, uh, has irregular, uh, shape, as you can see, there's a jog. And then there's some, uh, extreme topography, almost eighty-five feet of gray change across the project. Alright, so we tried to put together exhibit, so, uh, it's almost clear to see what we're, what we're talking about with the development. So in red, you're, we're showing that we're impacting roughly forty thousand, uh, square feet of the city of Sa- South Fulton's fifty-foot undisturbed buffer, and then another seventeen thousand square feet of the non-imperious buffer. Uh, the non-imperious buffer are areas that are, uh, shown to be impacted by our building, um, any imperious surface on the site. So our justification, uh, for this variance, um, if you can see in the top exhibit, um, in green, it's in your paperwork, sorry. Um, there's a existing culvert that passes under the road, so I tried to articulate as best as I could. The red lines that you're seeing is an old abandoned, uh, right of way that was owned and maintained by G dot, uh, prior to us purchasing the site. Uh, there is culverts that pass under that road for natural drainage, of course, and one of the culverts actually carries this stream. Portion of the stream that it carries is a intermittent stream, and then it discharges and, uh, creates a perennial stream going to the northwest portion of our site. So our plan for our development is to essentially take that, uh, existing culvert or pipe, reroute it around our, our warehouse and then discharge it back into said stream. Uh, what that requires is us to do the nationwide permit and then also the, uh, stream buffer variance through the E P D. And then, um, so as I mentioned, we have already received both of those approvals. Uh, our project will increase the water quality above and beyond, uh, city of South. Uh, our project will increase the water quality above and beyond, uh, City of South Fulton's code, uh, as you can see right now, or previously alluded to. Currently, right now, there is an existing road out there, which will be demoing. It directly discharges into said stream, so any runoff, there's a lot of trash back there, it all goes into that stream. So even with our development, we're bounded by code to address stormwater, where we're releasing at a rate less than our predeveloped rates. And we're also bounded by the Corps of Engineers to, uh, fill out a site review tool. And what that site review tool does, it shows that we're reducing the amount of total suspended solids into the stream. So, uh, we went through both of those processes as part of, uh, what Director McClendon said, we're bounded to meet those requirements that we set as justification to impact the stream. Next page. So, uh, of course, our justification, one of our justifications was the irregular portion of the side. Didn't wanna put together a graphic to show you, the board, what our, our building looked like if we shifted it out of the stream. Uh, you can see that, uh, uh, Magenta Line is our property line. It's, it completely, the building wouldn't fit without, uh, this variance approval. Um, as you can see, uh, with, without the, uh, the impacts, that's roughly twenty nine point nine of our site being unusable of the, uh, which is roughly two hundred and twenty one thousand square feet. Um, I also, uh, showed, you can see in the background, the existing topography. As you can see, where that old road bed used to be, it completely drops off, oh, sorry. I like tucking my hands. Uh, it completely drops off, um, down into the stream. So you can see that there are some steep slopes there, um, in which we're trying to, uh, mediate as best as we can. Uh, the next page, it does show proof of our approvals, so we did receive our U S Army Corps of Engineers approval on September seventeenth. And then on the next page, I did include our stream buffer variance through the, uh, E P D that we received on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. And I will save the rest of my time.
All right. Is there anyone here in opposition?
Yes, we have one card in opposition, Glenda Collins.
All right, Ms. Collins, would you step to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us if you're a citizen of the City of South Fulton, please?
Uh, good evening, board. Glenda Collins, Morning Creek Drive. Well, first of all, I probably need to sit back down, but I need to put this on record.
Okay.
I did not know it had been approved. But the natural streams are important to help control the pollution in the area where waste and for many other reasons. These streams have reduced harmful chemicals and pesticides and toxic household cleaners and avoid being dumped in our streams and drains that have a negative impact on the quality of our life. If this process moves forward, a maintenance process is required. However, like other many, like many other changes that have a negative impact in these situations, the maintenance is not kept up and a negative situation occur in the area and no one will be held responsible over the years. And the reason I say that is because Fairwood Elementary School, the natural drain was covered up. It created a big issue. And if we have heavy rains, it's still a problem because the drains have no place to go, the streams have no place to go. Natural streams have to maintain by planting native vegetation to stabilize banks, restoring natural, like wetlands, and removing barriers like dams and culverts to allow for natural water flow and fish migration. Destroying the last national, natural lake will cause flooding and heavy rains because the roots will not be there to absorb the water and the water will not be absorbed, absorbed in the ground. If the Army Corps of Engineers should consider the stipulations they have in place to protect and manage these natural lakes that are there for the ecosystem and maintaining barriers and water pollution. Flooding and pollution are serious issues and we must work to avoid them at all cost. I am asking the zoning board to follow the guidelines and have the developer look at other solutions in this matter. And also, uh, I believe there was a hundred foot buffer as opposed to a fifty foot buffer, and I did make that clear at the, uh, council meeting. It was on the paper, but I don't believe it was ever changed. And those apartments, my problem is too, the apartments that sit behind the warehouse, I'm hoping they will not be affected by this, uh, covering of this natural lake. And it says here, the applicant is seeking relief from all city's stream buffers in the area. It doesn't sound quite right to me.
Yes, ma'am.
That's serious.
Yes, ma'am.
And I see we have, uh, it says wetlands. The square footage of wetlands impact, that's another issue. But I appreciate you listening to me.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate it, being educated in the city of South Fulton, which I would never have been able, had the opportunity to do if we had not become a city.
Oh, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir?
Are there cards?
Thank you.
Um, uh, thank you, Ms. Collins, as always, for your comments. Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, so, uh, let, let me just state again, for the record, that, uh, reiterating what, uh, our civil engineer had mentioned before, right now, this, the area where we're, that where, where we're proposing to impact, um, has a abandoned right of way on it, where there is a culvert existing right now that is, that is insufficient, right? And there's also trash that's in that old right of way that goes into the stream that exists on the site, that you can see on the site plan. What we're proposing to do cleans that up as a part of the requirements from the E P D and Army Corps of Engineers. This is not a, a lake, I, I may have, may have been a misnomer by Ms. Collins, but this is not a lake and, and rather, uh, just a stream. And the last point, it, well, there's two other points. The first other point is, uh, to, from a mitigation standpoint, with the apartments, uh, the, that's why we put the truck court on the side away from the apartments to block and shield the noise, uh, from, from them. And then the other, the last point is that, this is the highest point, so there's no other, uh, uh, impact from the northern side of, of the site with respect to the street. Um, with that, I'll yield the rest of my time, if, if Antonio has anything else to add.
I did, I did wanna speak to the water quality aspect of it, uh, so, correct me if I'm wrong, from the city's standpoint, uh, we are required to include a stormwater maintenance agreement as part of our hydrology study, as part of the land disturbance permit, that does bound the developer to maintain their stormwater facilities and also the site.
All right, thank you so much for both presentations. At this time, uh-
I move that we close public discussion. I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to close public's discussion on case V two five dash zero one two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, here and none, we are out of public discussion. I will first go to Ms. Faraday, do you have any questions of the applicant, Ms. Faraday?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay. Mr., Chris- I'm just-
Oh, you, oh, you.
Oh, cool, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Not at this time.
Ms. Patterson?
No questions.
Dr. Blackshear?
I just have one question, what's going in this warehouse?
So this, this warehouse is zoned light industrial right now. And the light industrial does, o- only allows just what it says, light industrial type uses. From a in-user tenant standpoint, we can't know exactly who that'll be because we haven't, we don't have the zoning. Those types of in-users will not speak to you, will not talk to you unless, unless and until you have the zoning in place. So the exact tenant for the future, we cannot say, but what I can say is there will not be any heavy industrial type uses, no noxious noises, no, no odor, no odors, anything like that, no, no sort of heavy manufacturing or anything along those lines.
Okay, so nothing that would harm the community?
Co- correct, and, and I'll also just state on the record that I wanna preserve my constitutional rights to appeal, just, that's just, wanna put it on the record, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, you got a question?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so I, I actually followed this entire deal throughout the entire board, I, you've probably seen me-
I've seen you, yes, sir.
Every single meeting.
Yes, sir.
I own property like right across the railroad tracks right there.
Yes, sir.
I don't live in that neighborhood anymore, but I, I mean, I, I recognize Ms. Collins, I recognize Judy Henson, I recognize D'Amico.
Yes, sir.
And I was kinda wondering, you know, did, did y'all get any support from anybody around there, the neighbors?
For the rezoning?
No, 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 for, for this entire structure, because what I, I was hearing, everybody was against it. Did y'all get any support from the, from the neighboring, off of Fairwood, this street that's gonna be immediately impacted, did y'all get any support?
I, I don't, I don't think this, that would be an accurate statement to say that everybody was against our, our, our project. But I will say, I will say this, there, there was nobody specifically that submitted a letter of support, but we did have people in those meetings that were supporting our request, yes.
All right, I, I heard you say something about that, that intersection where you get on spur, uh, get on the highway right there, that, that's horrible.
Yes, sir.
I know, everybody had tried to do something, did I hear you say something about y'all was contributing funds?
Yes, sir. We did, we, we, we went to G, G dot and got a warrant analysis done that showed us that, that it does warrant a, a, a traffic, a traffic signal there. And we, as the applicant, have decided to contribute a hundred thousand dollars to the installation of that traffic signal.
Okay, w- where, has anybody told you where, where that's at?
Where, what is?
For the traffic signal going there, has anyone spoken to that? I know y'all contributed a hundred thousand to it on paper, right?
You wanna speak to that, Antonio, that's a simple question.
Yes, so we, we've actually had follow-up meetings with G dot-
Right.
Um, post zoning. Uh, so G dot, the, from where we stood, we gave G dot our study.
Right.
It does warrant a signal, but at this time, and you contact G dot, uh, they're not ready for the, to install the signal, but they are making other improvements or other planned improvements into the, uh-
Right, so that's what we've been here for twenty something years right there, thirty years.
Well, I think they actually, they have an actual actionable project slated. They're just trying to figure out what's the best approach, um, as a temporary solution until they, they fulfill that, that permanent project.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, I hear y'all point, you say U S Corps of Engineers and State of Georgia environmental, pretty much blessed the situation, but-
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna be honest, man, I, I, I haven't heard none of the people that I personally know on Fairwood and off of Mallory Road, even, welcome all, I hadn't heard anyone that came out and said, hey, we want this in the neighborhood, I haven't. And I'm gonna be talking honest with you, I'm, I'm a community guy, you know? I, I, I respect what you guys are doing, but it's the little people that I'm looking at, and that's my thoughts. I'm just trying to see that y'all get support from somebody over there that came and said they supported it. Then to give you this variance, so you saying, and even if you don't, if you're not granted this variance, you saying y'all can't build a building?
That's correct, so, um, yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Faraday?
Uh, quick question, 'cause I know, um, um, her concern was about the pollution, um-
Yes.
And, and I'm, I'm big on environment-
And the traffic.
And the traffic, yeah.
Yes.
But, um, and I'm big on, um, water quality as well-
Yes.
And what goes into, um, the communities, bodies, and everything in that nature. So, um, I, I've worked, uh, for manufacturing companies that we, um, had to have the E P A come in and, and test water and test, um, what we were bringing into the environment. And since we don't know what exactly is going into that building, um, I, I, I can't say that it's gonna be safe to the community, um, yet. I know you said light industrial, but that could mean anything.
But just, just to clarify, the, your, your health department, Fulton County Health Department dictates and determines what's coming from any facilities, right? So, uh, there's treatment processes, um, for any kind of discharge, uh, coming from your sewer system. Um, your sewer is tied into Fulton County Sewer, so there's, there's no illicit discharge into the neighboring community or streams. And as far as, uh, your water quality is concerned, those ponds that you see on the site, uh, there's two ponds, they both address water quality, uh, we're storing the water, letting any fock lints and anything settle into the pond, and then releasing clean water, uh, into our pipe system.
Thanks for that clarity.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I wanna, 'cause I don't think he answered your question as far as going in there, yeah. Greg Bowler, uh, founder and managing partner of K M T Partners.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, address is seventeen seventy six Peachtree Street, uh, Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia. Um, very much have roots in South Fulton. Um, to answer your question as far as what's going in there, they cannot get a business license if it does not meet the light industrial permitted uses. Yes, so there's steps in place to get to that point. Where we're at right now is that we have gotten support from Wellspring Living that is down there. We have had several, several in-person and Zoom meetings with several neighbors around there talking about this project, hence the reason we ended up getting support. The big concern that we kept hearing from the residents is the traffic, is the fatalities. There was nobody that did any type of study at all on that intersection to actually figure out if there can be a light that needs to be put there. It was needed, very much so. We did that warrant, we spent that money to get that warrant analysis done. And that is what the support that D O T needed for them to be able to move forward with actually getting a light. And so they are in the design phase of it, and it is in process, but it's also D O T. So it takes some time. But having money contributed towards it does help with all of that. So I do wanna make sure that, I know that you're hearing it from a select few of individuals, but, um, we have done significant outreach, and I know that this is a little separate from the stream buffer variance. Um, but I just wanna clarify that. Any other questions?
All right, anybody from the board? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I know it may be a little separate, but it really kinda ties in as a whole because if you don't get the variance, it kinda stalls the project altogether for whatever being-
Is, is the goal to review the variance, or is the goal to have concern about the rezoning?
Really, the goal was just making sure-
That we did our outreach.
Right, and I, what I was really look, looking for was some of the neighbors more support.
There's no way of getting all neighbor's support on, on, isn't that, I wish, I wish that was the case, I really do, but there's no way.
So, I, I understand what you're saying, I, uh, one way or another, I, I don't live in that neighborhood anymore, but I still just have an ear and I hear people. And if they not supporting it, I wouldn't care if it was Corps of Engineers, State of Georgia, Health Department, they can't make decision for the neighbor's city that run around, and that, that's, that's my only point, that's my only concern.
And so the council vote does not matter?
The council vote do matter-
Okay.
But that's a different body.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Does any other board member have it, Mr. O'Donnell?
Just for clarity, you, we're, so we're gonna, the stream, as it enters your property, you're gonna put it into an underwater culvert, uh, type of thing, and then, is it gonna, is it gonna go underneath your building or around the building?
No, so in the exhibit, uh, I think that's a few pages back, but if you look up on the screen, oh, it's right there on the screen, so there's a red line on the, uh, screen that is the existing culvert. Uh, there's a, there, uh, can I point at that? No, I can't point at that. But there's also a blue line that you can see of us rerouting that pipe to go around our building and then back into the stream.
I, I see now. I understand.
This is a blue line right here.
Yeah, I understand, okay. I understand now, okay. And you're not doing anything to the water as far as cleaning it or nothing, you're just rerouting the water that's there, is that correct?
Yeah, so we're, we're- Yeah, so we're, we're rerouting the off-site water. So we're, we're, we're only able to handle the water within our site. So we're taking all the water in our site that was previously discharged into the stream, including the right-of-way, and we're routing that through our pond, treating it and then releasing it back into the stream.
In other words, the, the water that's on our site doesn't go into the stream in the same condition it goes into the stream now being untreated. So now you have the treatment facility to them.
So it goes into a, a retention pond?
Correctly, yes.
There's no treatment, it's just a retention pond to capture that water?
There, there is treatment.
Yeah. Well, per, per the Georgia Stormwater Manual and how the ponds are designed, uh, they, they hold a permanent pool of water. That permanent pool of water, as water is released into there, it's, it sits, it doesn't release below a certain elevation, below that pooling elevation. And it allows sediments to settle down into the pond and then release the clean water up above that, that volume.
And what's the plan for clearing out that silt?
So, uh, during the, uh, the grading process and, um, throughout construction, what we're, what we're doing is, I mean, they're periodically, uh, removing all the sediment through the road patrol process. And then once, uh, the development's done and the pond is regrasped and everything, that's part of the maintenance process of, uh, there shouldn't be any silt because the, the, per the code, the whole site needs to be covered and stabilized. So there shouldn't be any additional silt that's going, uh, from our site into the prom- pond. And then, uh, we'll just continuously maintain the pond, uh, through the lifecycle of the building.
The pond is for runoff, correct?
Correct.
For your asphalt parking lots?
Correct.
There's gonna be silt that goes into that pond?
Well, are you talking about pollutants or are you talking about silt? So silt-
I'm talking about silt. It, it, the reason I, the reason I ask is, you ever heard of Ritchie Brothers?
No.
They have a large asphalt parking lot down there on the intersection of Sharpsburg and Column Road and I-85. And they have a silt pond much like you're, uh, uh, requesting. And unfortunately, their silt pond filled up because they didn't follow up with maintenance. And then that water and the silt went into the next pond. And the problem with that is it went into a, a community known as Spring Water Plantation. And that, that, that neighborhood was stuck with a, a very large bill because they had to clear out the silt from, honestly, their lake. It was filling up their lake. That's why I was just wondering what type of maintenance program that you're gonna have in place to ensure that once that gets to a certain level of silt, it's maintained and cleaned out?
Yeah, so, uh, as I was explaining, as part of the requirement and code, uh, from the city of South Fulton, there is a maintenance agreement that has to be included with our design documents and that maintenance include, that maintenance agreement has a inspection schedule that's for the tenant. I, I can't, can't control what other developers do.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any more questions? Dr. Blackshear? Patterson? Mr. Johnson? Ms. Faraday? Mr. O'Donnell? At this time, we'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we close public comment.
I second.
It's been properly moved and second to close public comment on V two five dash zero one two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we are out of public comment. Uh, is there a motion, uh, that anybody on the board wants to make? We gotta leave at some point.
I still have, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, what did the staff?
The staff recommended approval.
Staff recommend com- approval with conditions.
And those kids, the conditions are all the state-
What are those conditions again?
They, they're all the state required, uh, conditions of the state approval.
State and, and-
State and the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers.
Army Corps of Engineers, yep.
They got all those, okay. All right. Well.
Don't all speak at once.
Um, I, I'll go ahead and, uh, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for case V two five dash zero one twelve, um, to approve per staff recommendation based on the condish- based on the, uh, conditions that were to be met or have been met.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Will staff please take a hand count?
Can all in favor raise their hands? Can all oppose raise their hands?
In favor.
Uh, you're, uh, we're gonna redo that. Can all in favor raise our hands of the motion? Can all in opposition raise their hands? So the motion passes.
Three, two, motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Good luck to y'all, congratulations. All right. Does staff have anything else for the board?
No, no further, um, updates or announcements.
Okay, this time I'll take a motion from the board. Uh, this time I'll take a motion from the board.
I move to close the, um-
Adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting.
A second.
It's been properly moved to adjourn and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are out.